Good evening, everybody. Good evening. My name is Lisinda Congriff and I am the Mayor of Brimbank City Council. It's my pleasure to welcome you all to this evening's ordinary council meeting. And I declare this meeting open at 7pm. In the unlikely event of an emergency this evening, please follow the directions of council officers and the emergency procedures which are located on the wall near the door. I'd also like to note that I've given approval for the journalists from the Brimbank Star Weekly and Channel 31 to audio and video record the meeting. I've also given approval for members of the Greek community to record the condolence items on the agenda. Members of the gallery are not intended to be recorded, but please notify a council officer should you have any concerns whatsoever. Now, can I please ask everyone to stand if you're able for the acknowledgement of country? On behalf of the Brimbank City Council, I would like to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the land, the Warandri people, and to pay our respects to elders, past and present. Please be seated. Councilors, please remain standing for the council committee. As the council, we will act in the best interests of the Brimbank community and consider the immediate and long-term impacts of our decisions. We will make these decisions fairly and without bias. We will uphold all our obligations under the laws of Victoria and council's local laws, and we will act in accordance with our code of conduct. Thank you, councillors. Please be seated. So we're up to number item three on the agenda, which is apologies and leave of absence. There are no apologies or leave of absences this evening, so we'll go straight on to item 14, which is disclosure of conflicts of interest. Councilors, are there any disclosures of conflicts of interest this evening? No? Okay, we'll move straight on to item number five, which is designation of items as confidential. There are six items on the agenda this evening to be designated as confidential. May I have a mover of a motion to designate these items as such? Councilor Papafoudeo?
As printed.
Thank you, Councilor Papafoudeo. Seconded by Councilor Judit Chair. And councillors, may I put that to the vote? All those in favour?
Carried. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to item number six, which is confirmation of minutes of previous meetings. And may I have a mover of a motion to confirm the minutes in the previous council meetings? Thank you, Councilor Tarkos. As printed in the papers. And is there a second of that item? Councilor Borg? Thank you. And I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour?
Carried.
Thank you. And we are moving on to item number seven on the agenda, which is condolences. Unfortunately, there are three items of condolences this evening. And the first one is for Mama Abol Atem. And we would like to offer our condolences to the family of Mama Abol Atem. And may I have a mover of a motion of a condolence for this particular person, this lady? Item number 7.1 on the agenda. Councilor Papafoudeo? Thank you, Councilor Papafoudeo. Is there a second of that item?
Of course.
Thank you, Councilor Judit Chair. And would the mover like to speak to the item? Would the second like to speak?
Just simply, Madam Mayor, just simply to say that on behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to extend our condolences to the family and friends of Mama Abol Atem. Mama Abol Atem was a strong advocate within the community and supported many vulnerable Sudanese young women and children to access Brimbank City Council services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Judit Chair. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? No? Okay, we'll put that one to the vote. All those in favour?
Carried.
Okay, the second item of condolences this evening is for Andreas Vazilopoulos. And we would like to offer our condolences to the family of Andreas. Is there a mover of a motion of condolence for Andreas? Councilor Papafoudeo?
Thank you.
Sorry, Councilor Papafoudeo moved the motion. Councilor Sam David, seconded the motion and the mover would like to speak to the motion. Thank you.
On behalf of Brimbank City Council, I would like to extend our condolences to the family and friends of Andreas Vazilopoulos. Andreas was born in Greece and arrived in Australia in 1956 and resided in St Albans since 1965. He worked at General Motors and Vicarage for many decades. Andreas was a dedicated volunteer and a life member of the Greek community in St Albans since 1965. Andrea was one of the original committee members who together fundraised to build the church and community hall in Arthur Street in St Albans. Since 1965, Andrea would only attend one church, Agia Maraskevi, in St Albans. His dedication and love for this church was recognised by many. He continued to be a volunteer every year to assist with the annual festival. I would like to thank Andrea for his commitment and hard work for the Greek community in St Albans. Dearest condolences to his wife, Banayyota, his two daughters Anastasia and Steph, and his granddaughter Banayyota. May he rest in peace. Madam Mayor, may I say some words in Greek, please?
Absolutely.
Εκ μέρους του δημαχίου Brimbank, σας προσφέρουμε τα θερμά συνεπιτήρια της οικογένειας του Ανδρέου Ανδρέα Βαζιλόπουρος. Ο Ανδρέας είχε προσφέρει εθελοντικά σε διάφολες δουλειές της κοινόποιτος και πάρα πολλά πλώνια συπαρικία μας. Τον ευχαριστούμε πάρα πολύ και θα τον τιμόμαστε να είναι εναφρεί το χώμα που σε σκεμβάζει. Καλό παράδεισο Ανδρέα, εωνία σου υμνή.
Thank you, Councilor Papafoudeo. Would the second like to speak to the motion? Councilor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes. What happened to Neil Andreas is one of those handful of people that started the community in St Albans, Arthur Street. Last month, we lost another, so we're from that community, in Sadoskonikos at the time. And he was one of those people that continued working for the community, as volunteer thereafter. He started with the press committee and he continued on until he's passed away. So for us, as Councilor Papafoudeo said, is to wish the family well and our condolences from the council's point of view.
Thank you, Councilor David. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? No? I'll put that to the vote. All those in favour?
Carried.
Thank you. We'll now move on to item number 7.3, which is another condolence item for Lynne Wannan, A.M. And we would like to offer our condolences to the family of Lynne Wannan. Is there a mover of a motion of condolence for Lynne? Councilor Tarkos? Sorry, would you mind taking your microphone?
I would like to move the motion as per papers.
Thank you, Councilor Tarkos, seconded by Councilor Headich. Councilor Tarkos, would you like to speak to this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, Lynne Wannan served as a director of the Officer of the Community Sector Department of Planning and Community Development Victoria. This one was an advisor to the government for both local, state and national levels of government for almost 25 years. Madam Mayor, Lynne Wannan has been an inspiration to a generation of early childhood advocates. She was a champion of community-owned and controlled childcare. She was a brilliant mind and a policy genius that made big contributions to fields including early childhood, education and palliative care. She was instrumental in establishing Western Chances, which, as we all know, are scholarships that are awarded to talented and motivated young people in Melbourne's West, who have worked hard and have been recognised by their nominations from leaders, lecturers, teachers and the wider community. I would like to extend this council's sincere condolences to her husband Hayden, her children Tom and Ellie, and family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Tarkos. Councilor Headich, would you like to say a few words?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, what Councilor Tarkos has said. Lynne was a legend in this area. She was well-known throughout, I guess, the health, wellbeing, community sector for her work. She was tireless, she was inspirational, she was just one of those people who really made a difference and who will miss her greatly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Headich. Councilors, is there anyone else who would like to say any words on this item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour?
Carried.
Thank you. We move on to item number eight on the agenda, which is congratulations. And there are no items of congratulations this evening, so we'll move straight on to item number nine, which is public question time. Miss Flair, understand we have some questions this evening?
Yes, Mayor. The first question is from Charlie Vazina, who are the leaders in attendance this evening? The question is, the current Road Traffic Authority building in Clark Street footprint occupies approximately 100 car spaces that was previously available to the public. Why was this particular land sold to the detriment of the public and businesses given the chronic shortage of car parking in the Brimbank CBD?
Thanks, Mel, and thanks, Charlie, for your question. So the proposal to sell or lease part of the Clark Street with a street car park in Sunshine for the development of an office building for the new Vicarage office was first considered by council at the ordinary meeting on 22nd of March 2016. The report provided a detailed analysis of the pros and cons of the proposed sale or lease and recommended council undertake statutory community consultation on the proposal. The consultation process included an opportunity for community members to make written submissions and be heard by a council committee. At the council meeting of the 21st of June 2016, a further report was considered on the proposal to sell or lease part of the Clark Street with a street car park, including a summary of the submissions received on the proposal and resolved to proceed with the proposal. In relation to the car parking, council endorsed a draft car parking strategy at its ordinary council meeting on the 19th of February 2019 for community consultation. The draft strategy includes a number of actions to manage car parking, including an action to develop and implement parking management plans for activity centres with first priority being Sunshine and St Albans. It is anticipated that the final draft parking strategy will be considered by council in the coming months, and that might answer some further questions for you.
Next question? Thank you, Mayor. The second question from Mr Vazina is, the Brimbank Council gave a permit for the building of the current Road Traffic Authority building in Clark Street, based on three internal parking levels. At an ordinary council meeting some months ago, representatives of this building applied to convert one parking level into office space. The application was debated, which was led by Councilor Lancaster, citing chronic parking shortages in the Brimbank CBD, and the application was refused on that basis. I'm of the belief that if internal parking in buildings is non-existent, like the Brimbank council offices, or internal parking in buildings is reduced, the occupier has to source alternative parking, which is exclusive to the building occupants, as Brimbank has with the high-rise car park. What has now changed since the refusal of the last application as stated above, which has permitted the RTA to reduce one level of parking tenants and via a further imposed on public parking within the Brimbank CBD.
Thanks again for your question, Charlie. It's a good question. Then the proposal to remove a level of car parking and convert it into office space at the site 12 Clark Street Sunshine was considered by council in April 2018. It was determined to refuse the amendment to the permit. The applicant appealed this decision to VCAT, where the tribunal found that the proposal was acceptable, taking into account the fact that Sunshine is a national employment and innovation cluster as set out in Plan Melbourne. The tribunal stated that it was the important designation where economic activity... So I think that's supposed to say it's important destination where economic activity is to be promoted as a tool to drive increased activity in the area. And that the loss of 66 parking spaces from the site is an acceptable impact on the surrounding and broader area, particularly given that there are other transport options due to the site, available to the site due to its proximity to Sunshine Railway Station and the bus interchange. It's noted that council will be considering a report tonight which seeks to add another two levels of office space on the existing building at 12 Clark Street Sunshine. Thank you.
The next two questions are from Mr Neil Head, who is in attendance this evening. We refer to the report on the draft neighbourhood character study as summarized on pages 475 to 481 of the council meeting agenda for 25th of June this evening. We advocate that a specific character type should be established for Albion Village rather than the current colour as proposed. Our question at this stage relates to the recommended public consultation phase, which excludes Albion locality. Given the potentially devastating impacts of the study for the future of Albion development and given the recent appeals tribunal finding that proposed units at 63 Derma Street are out of character for the locality, we request that the upcoming consultation, A, names and includes Albion and RDU Community Club Incorporated and any other interested Albion group as groups to be consulted, that is, joining the list of otherwise named groups in the council report; B, names and includes consultation with the Heritage Advisory Committee of Council and any other relevant advisory committees of council; C, includes drop-in session at a central location with Albion within Albion, such as the Cora Creek Neighborhood House or the Albion Tennis Club Rooms, that is, in addition to Sunshine Library and the Deer Park Library locations currently recommended in the council report. In summary, can the above noted suggestion recommendations at A to C above please be added to the council report 12.10? Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Welcome. So council will be considering the draft neighbourhood character study tonight, and we welcome or have received a submission from the Albion RDU Community Club and pending council's decision to endorse the study for the purpose of consultation. Council officers will be available to attend a meeting of the Albion RDU Community Club as part of the consultation process. And the draft study will be listed as an item for discussion at the August meeting of the Brimbank Heritage Advisory Committee. That Albion residents are invited to attend any of the five drop-in sessions that are proposed to be held in Sunshine, at Deer Park, St Albans, Sydenham and Kielo libraries. And council officers and indeed councillors will be available to discuss or meet with residents or resident groups as part of the consultation process. Beyond the proposed current consultation, there will be further statutory consultation in relation to the amendment process, pending council's future adoption of the draft study and a decision to pursue a planning scheme amendment. Thank you.
The next two questions are from Mr Peter Thompson, who is not...
Absent?
Absent, not in attendance this evening. First question is, due to the fact that Brimbank Council puts community first as its motto, could traders working in Sunshine get discounted or free permit parking in the multi-deck car park? Although the parking amount doesn't seem a lot, it adds up when they're parked there for up to 12 hours every day.
And I know that Peter's not here this evening, but I'm sure he will watch Big Takes back. So thank you, Peter, for your question. To assist council in determining the management arrangements for the Brimbank Multi-Deck Car Park, including payment options, council permitted GTA consultants to prepare a management plan. The management plan, which was adopted by council in June 2016, highlighted that the multi-deck car park needs to accommodate various user groups and that it should be affordable and equitable to everybody. The management plan also highlighted that the provision of car parking represents a cost and that part of the cost should be borne by those using the car park. The development of the pricing structure for the car park considered a number of factors. And it's considered that the current rates, which are that it's free for the first three hours, it's $2 for up to five hours, with a maximum daily rate of $4, is affordable, particularly in comparison to parking in similar areas. To provide all-day free or discounted parking to Sunshine traders or any other specific user group would be inequitable and would likely impact the availability of car parking for other community members who shop in the area or access the Sunshine leisure centre. Thank you.
The next question from Mr Thompson is, I have looked at the proposed council budget, 2019 to 2020, and couldn't see anywhere that the Metro Access worker will be employed by council after the 31st of December, when the extension of employment by the NDIA runs out. Will council be employing the current employee in the position of Disability Services Officer, which is a much more sensible title for the position than Metro Services Officer, from the 1st of January 2020 to the 30th of June 2020, and included in further budgets?
Thank you, Miss Flair, and thanks again, Peter. So we have indeed received confirmation, we're very pleased to have received confirmation from the NDIA that the Metro Access Officer position funded through the Building Inclusive Communities Programme has indeed been extended until the 31st of December. As previously informed, the council remains committed to the principles of equality, choice, diversity, non-discrimination and access to quality services and acknowledges the work undertaken through the Metro Access Officer role and the expertise offered in this area. It is the CER's responsibility to determine matters related to the employment of staff, so we will leave that with her to make that determination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The last two questions are from Mr Dinesh Jhaasuraya, who I... Yes, I saw him before. Hi, Dinesh. The first question is, the Victorian Audit General's Office, VAGO, Fraud and Corruption Control Local Government Report, auditing that three councils, including our neighbouring Wyndham City Council, was released recently on the 19th of July 2019. VAGO have found there are gaps in the fraud and corruption controls of the audited council and in some cases, important controls are not working. The failure of these controls can foster a culture in which fraud and corruption can occur and go undetected and result in financial loss or reputational damage to the councillors. Will the Brimbank Council commit to implementing any relevant recommendations from this report to strengthen its own fraud and corruption controls?
Thank you, Dinesh. Good question. And particularly relevant for this council, who are very, very committed to good governance. So we recognise that community experts... Sorry, we recognise that the community expects that councillors and council staff act responsibly and with integrity and in the public interest. We have a robust fraud and corruption framework and a programme to ensure that fraud and corruption controls are in place in Brimbank. We have independent audits, educational review programmes and transparency measures in place, such as providing summaries of council expenses on the website and reporting to our audit and risk committee. We're reviewing the VAGO report and will implement any recommendations that will strengthen our existing fraud and corruption framework, which is quite strong and stringent. I'm sure the councillors around the table will agree with me. So thank you, Dinesh.
The last question from Mr Jhaasuraya is, for the duration of the next council election campaign in 2020, will the Brimbank Council consider setting up a fact-check team to publicly assess and determine the accuracy of claims by candidates, public figures, advocacy groups and institutions engaged in the election campaign?
Thank you, Dinesh. Another great question and one that's probably of great interest to the councillors around the table who went through an election campaign just a few years ago. But it is unfortunately not the role of council to monitor candidates and electioneering activity in relation to council elections. The Victorian Electoral Commission, or the BDC, is responsible for conducting the election and all dealings with the election candidates, including campaign material. And they would be the responsible organisation to approach with your question. It is important for all councils to remain impartial in relation to all electioneering activity, but we will be running some candidate forums shortly for people that are interested in running for council in 2020. Thank you. That's all. That's all the public questions for this evening. So we will now move on to item number 10, which is petitions. And there are two petitions to be received this evening. So councillors will be asking for a procedural motion to formally receive these petitions. And the first one is item 10.1, which is a petition relating to climate change emergency in Brimbank. And is there a mover of a motion to receive the petition? Councilor Headich, is there a second of that motion? Councilor Trull? And that's a procedural motion, so we won't go to debate, we'll go straight to a vote. All those in favour?
Carried.
Thank you. The second petition is item 10.2, which is residents of Kialba object to the overdevelopment of 27 Driscolls Road, Kialba Permit Number P497/2018. Is there a mover of a motion to receive this petition? Councilor Allen, seconded by Councilor Papafoudeo. And again, it's a procedural motion, so we'll go straight to the vote on that one. All those in favour of receiving the petition?
Carried.
Thank you. Okay, item number 11 is minutes and reports of special committees. And there are no minutes or reports from special committees this evening, so we move straight on to item number 12, which is officer reports. So councillors, the first item on the agenda this evening is item number 12.1, which is the final draft annual budget 1920, which includes the final draft long-term financial plan 19 to 29 and the final draft ready strategic strategy of 1920. And I'll ask the director, Mr Ma, to briefly introduce his report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is for council to consider adopting those documents, as the mayor just read out. Council adopted these draft documents in April, in April, and saw feedback from the community in line with the requirements of section 223 of the Local Government Act between now and then. Twenty-one written submissions were received, and of those eight submitted, presented to a hearing of submissions committee. These documents are now presented to council for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ma. So councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover? Councilor Tarkos? Shanes put in the budget papers. Thank you, Councilor Tarkos. Second of... Thank you, Councilor Judit Chair. And would the mover like to speak to the motion? It's Madam Mayor.
Madam Mayor, with the 21 submissions received from our community, many members coming forward to present before us, it's great to see the council respond to the growing and changing needs of our community and embark on a huge capital works programme, which include the construction of Alfreda Street Civic Plaza, mall men's health programmes, continue the rolling programmes of upgrading our sports facilities to make them inclusive of female sport participation, which is increasing. I attended one recently, Madam Mayor, in Kielo Park, and it was unbelievable the reception it had and the growth of the female sport is just booming. Implement Sunshine Leisure Centre masterplan, $16.8 million committed to sports facilities, facilities which include Mall Park, RDR Delahaye Reserve Sports Pavilion, the Bond Thomas Reserve, $4.9 million committed for parks and playgrounds and open spaces, $1.7 million for cycling paths, including Sydenham Rail Corridor, called a freeway recreational trail. I would like to thank all the community members that took time to write and submit a budget proposal and believe this budget continues to respond to the needs of our growing community by prioritising libraries, hubs, recreation sports and the proposal for the new St Albans Leisure Centre, programmes that address health, sustainability and greater sports participation. I support the adoption of this budget.
Thank you, Councilor Tarkos. And would the second like to speak? Councilor Judit Chair?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also wish to thank all the submissions to the budget who were very diligent in coming up with their submissions. And Madam Mayor, this year, the budget and capital works I'd like to speak about especially is $71.6 million, up from $59.6 last year. So there is a significant increase. And of course, it does include our St Albans Leisure Centre, which we are still seeking government funding for, but will build as evidenced by this budget. So the residents out there who were disappointed that $5 million was not forthcoming from the state government will be pleased that council is still supporting this health and wellbeing hub and of course, will continue to advocate for the funding of it. Also in the budget is the Lax Reserve Flagship Park, which is shaping up to be a magnificent recreational space. Many residents have commented on this park already. Also in the Taylor's Ward is the Delahaye Sports Pavilion, the Sydenham Rail Corridor works, the Calder Freeway Recreational Trail, as well as various works to kinders, community houses and roads. It is also significant to note, Madam Mayor, the council will be undertaking work on the, on a community garden strategy, researching homelessness, neighbourhood houses and of course, investing in our sports facilities in line with our sports facility development plan to increase capacity, especially in female participation. One thing that came up as I first was elected was the reinstatement of council paying for fences when it abuts private property. The shed cost fencing guidelines have been prepared. I am sure that council will endorse it. And the long-term financial plan also shows that we are on track to deliver most of our works, but we are aware of challenges, given all the construction the state government is undertaking. We will continue to fund, to find efficiencies, to free up capital, to continue our delivery of services, maintain and build new infrastructure. Thank you to all in the preparation for this budget, including the officers and of course, my fellow councillors. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Judit Chair. Councilors, anyone else that would like to speak on this item? Councilor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like previous budgets, this budget reflects a strong focus on improving the amenity, livability, social connectedness and governance of the municipality, both practically and strategically. Of course, a number of projects are included in the budget, including community facilities upgrades, and such upgrades include the various children's services facilities. Playground upgrade included... upgrade included in St Albans West Kindergarten, community facilities toilet upgrade, upgrading to existing toilets to be compliant with the Disability Discrimination Act, and to refurbish ageing toilets, the Deer Park Library redevelopment and visibility study, review of the visibility cost study and cost estimates, as well as this design. And the completion of this project is envisaged to be 2025 and 26. Including in other projects are the pathways, more specifically local cycle routes, connection programmes, trails to be constructed from David Drive to Robinsons Road, on road cycling route programmes along Billingham Road, Deer Park, from Station Road to VU Secondary College and Corroit Creek Trail. And of course, the neighbourhood upgrades that Councillor Dujie also mentioned, creation of pedestrians and cycling links from St Albans Station to VU Uni via Metaclemmy Street. And of course, the list goes on and on. I really want to commend the work that has been done by the councillors, the community and the council officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Any other speakers? Councillor David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And indeed, over the years, I saw a lot of budgets and I've run through all the budgets, but here's one of the developments. I think the city here is a way of happiness, and as the other councillors mentioned, throughout awards, and indeed the Harvest Award, it was received some $1.3 million for the news spoke video at Moor Park, $2.5 million for the Hanchaw Road Civic building here in Sunshine, redevelopment of the MB Lynch Memorial Gardens, which is getting on the way now, it'll be a beautiful view to see, tremendous passion for the house in Sunshine. The stone wall harvesting system in Vanmore Reserve, Durham, $400,000. And of course, the park improvement on Tarontar Road, that's another $360,000. And continue to do lots and lots of things as we go along, Madam Mayor, and it's a very, very good budget indeed. And I congratulate you, my fellow councillors, of course, the officers for playing the part with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor David. Councillors, any other speakers? Councillor Papafoufou?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support the adoption of the final draft budget. I believe it's probably the best budget we are delivering to our Brimbank community during our term as councillors. We have included an increase of over $22 million on last year's capital works, sporting facilities upgrades and enhancements of almost $17 million, which also includes three new sporting pavilions, almost $5 million on upgrades to the Lakes Reserve and the MB Lynch Memorial Gardens in Taylors and Harvest Awards, almost $2 million improving bike paths and shed paths. These are just a few to name. Councillors have also heard the community. The last two and a half years, councillors would have received a number of calls from residents who have shared fences with council owned reserves or parks. We have heard these residents and have requested to facilitate the reintroduction of council contributing to fence works in the budget. Overall, I would like to acknowledge the long hours and hard work that the staff, the councillors and the community have contributed to this process. I highly support and commend this final draft budget 2019 to 2020, and the officer recommendations to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Papafoufou. Any further speakers on the budget? Councillor Headitch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My comments are basically ones at the high level. I support much of what's been said here tonight. I think the budget process this year has been really good. We've had an extensive conversation about it for a long period of time, so that's been fabulous. And I think all credit to the CEO and the officers for that, it's been really, really good. And also the councillors for the way they participate in it. For me, though, the budget is in really good nick. It's in good condition, it adds a lot of load to medium, I guess, indicators around the different aspects that VAGO and others look at. We do have a lot of issues coming from the social side of the community. Our CEPO is still, we're still down the bottom end of that with a need to do a whole lot more in the community, and we have issues to do with environmental degradation that keep coming up, asbestos wherever we open up the ground, resurfacing and so on. And we have costs that come from that. So we have a whole range of other costs that other councillors don't necessarily have. I think we've also had a low level of input from state and federal governments in terms of grants. We've been left holding the baby on St Albans Leisure Centre, and we do need, in my opinion, to continue to take a closer look at the way we do finance our overall council budget, in particular the infrastructure, and have a little bit more expansive approach over time. We also, I think, need to have a good hard look at how we do strategic assessments for major projects, so we can advocate in a far more considered and, I guess, shovel ready way going forward. That would be my contribution tonight. But overall, a great process, a great budget overall. I think the indicators are all where any community would want them, I think we could do a little bit more, but that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Councillor Headitch. Councillors, are there any further speakers on the budget?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I guess we'd like to act in with what other councillor already mentioned. In the ally of brand of the program, thus we lay the vital role for the strengthening community capacity, encouraging health and wellbeing and booting community petition. Like many Brimbank family, I am patient about develop wonderful and nurturing families by and our budget, a common measure of great intensity and very improvement in this area. We are putting for $46 million on material and child healthcare, it looks to $46 million for state government grant, common goal about the achievement of our artist and for our community first principle. So community is the heart of everything task we can do. We are looking for the long term health and wellbeing of our community. We have invite community consultant and show a community engagement and we celebrate diversity of our community through the many event and identity task council under tab.
Thank you, Councillor Trull. Other speakers? Councillor Langessch?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would certainly like to endorse and support the comments that have been made by the other councillors so far, and much is already been said that I might have said. I'd just like to certainly endorse the continued funding towards the St Albans Leisure Centre. But the background story to things like the Lakes Reserve, where we've had people concerned about the condition of that area for a long time, and the amount of effort that's been put in by staff in that area is truly recognised, and getting up this sort of work to produce this excellent park that will come in the future is really fantastic. That's really good to see that. For those that are interested in the heritage aspect, there's the reassembly of the police hut at Herick's Homestead. I know the painters in that area have been working on that one for a long time, trying for getting funding and trying to achieve that result that's just been lying there, rusting. To get that reassembled is a great aspect for our heritage that certainly is important to those who are interested in that aspect of the area. And of course, the, as has been mentioned, the Sydney Road Corridor bicycle track and the Calder Freeway Recreational Trail form a very valuable part of what one may dream might be a regional network running all the way up to Sumri. It has certainly tourism potential and of course, the great recreational potential. So to see those bicycle trails extend into the north of this municipality, into those areas is fantastic. So I'd certainly support this budget as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councillor Langessch. Are there any further speakers on the budget, councillors? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item 12.2, which is the council plan draft year three annual action plan 2019-2020. I'll ask Mr. Hogan, Director, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In compliance with the Local Government Act 1989, council has previously adopted a four year council plan to ensure the implementation of the strategic directions outlined in the council plan as set by council. Each year, an annual action plan is developed and monitored. Council is asked to consider the draft year three annual action plan for financial year 2019-2020 for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a mover of a motion, councillors? Is there movement, Madam Mayor? Councillor Dujie Chair moving? Is there a seconder? Councillor Headitch, would the mover like to speak to the motion? No? Would the second like to speak? Councillors, are there any other speakers in relation to this item? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now up to item 12.3, which is application P497-2018 for approval of a development plan under development plan overlay, schedule 17 for the site at 27 Driscolls Road, Kiaba. So councillors, this is the one that we received a petition for earlier this evening, and I will go over to Mr. Walsh to introduce this report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is provided to council with an assessment of the application for approval of the development plan against the, and that assessment's been made against the provisions of the Brimbank planning scheme. As the matter has been appealed to VCAT for failure to determine, council's required to make a decision on what view it would have formed. Council will note in the report that this application has received considerable interest in the community and received 1,700 submissions, plus the petition this evening. The officer recommendation is that council notifies VCAT, the applicant and submitters that it has formed the opinion that council would have refused the approval of the development plan had it had the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Allen?
I'd like to move it as per business papers, please.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Is there a seconder? Councillor Tarkos, would the mover like to speak to the motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In my opinion, the applicant does not care for the residents of Kiaba. They made that abundantly clear when they went straight to VCAT with their development plan, rather than continuing to work with council. When you have a plan where council officers have raised a dozen different issues, such as items that are not meeting the Australian standards or complying with Brimbank's planning scheme, when you have several MPs on both sides who oppose the plans, when you have an unprecedented nearly 800 objections by locals, you have to ask yourself what makes the developer think that 208 units and townhouses is a positive outcome for the community? Simply put, this development plan does not benefit the community. It places greedy profits above residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Would the second like to speak?
Thank you to my co-councillor for his words, which I fully endorse, the 14 points of refusal and the officer recommendation, many of which are response to the RES Code requirements. The bulk and scale of this development does not lend itself to the existing neighbourhood setting, which makes it inconsistent with appropriate design standards and site coverage. It does not lend itself to the existing neighbourhood character or dwelling diversity or front setback restricting landscaping, nor does it take into the advantage of energy efficiency by orientating to the north. The streetscape of Driscolls Road already experiences heavy traffic in peak and off peak times. This will not be able to cope with the proposed density, as indicated in the officer's report, will detrimentally impact the surrounding road network, which includes the very busy Green Gully Road, with some lots that will require vehicle crossings that do not meet the Australian standards for distance to intersections, which could result in unacceptable traffic safety issues. Madam Mayor, putting the RES Code inadequacies aside, the safety of our community and residents is paramount here. And I am reading that in this officer's report, that this plan does not meet the Australian standards for distances to intersections, which could result in unacceptable safety risks to commuters and pedestrians. The lack of regard to existing native vegetation, including the established trees, native grasses and canopy within the site, without an opportunity to even discuss them, their inevitable removal is of grave concern to our council, which prides itself in retaining and planting of trees, and not just for amenity, but for energy and sustainability purposes. These trees are also habitat and home to many native species, which will be displaced and compromise the biodiversity and replacement of them. Given all the above and the insufficiencies of meeting RES Code on many fronts, which include character, diversity, integration into the streetscape, front setback, site coverage, energy inefficiency, private open space, design detail, I support the officer's recommendation in this case, as 27 Driscolls Road being an overdevelopment and henceforth, do not support the current development plan for the Driscolls Road, Kiaba.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Councillors, are there any other speakers for against? Councillor Papafoufou?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I endorse what has been said by my fellow councillors. Council has received over 700 submissions. Last week, we heard from 14 residents speak against this proposal, and today we've received a petition with 66 signatures. Like many residents, I do welcome a development on the former Kiaba Secondary School site, but I do not welcome 208 dwellings on this site as being proposed by the developer. Streets are quite narrow, parking is a concern, and emergency vehicles such as fire trucks will have issues getting through with cars parked in streets. The narrow nature strips, the location of the weekly bids being collected each week will also be an issue for council collection vehicles when cars are parked in the street. There are two main entrance and exit roads, both being on Driscolls Road. This road gets quite busy and congested at times. What will happen if that road needs to be closed off, or if there's an accident? There's no alternative route. There is a proposal of 16 dwelling sites on the boundary with St Paul's Primary School. This creates privacy and safety issues for families of children who attend this school. There are far too many concerns and issues with this proposed development. A review of decreasing the number of dwellings, widening streets, allowing for parking bays, planting of trees needs to be considered by the developer. Again, this development cannot go ahead. It will have a severe impact for our community.
Thank you, Councillor Papafoufou. Councillor Dujie Chair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Madam Mayor, it's a little unusual in this case that the council officers, councillors, I presume, and residents agree with the refusal. 700 objections must be a record. The submitters at the planning forum articulated extremely well that the residents want to see development, but not this one. The developers' representatives stated that they would look, that they would work with council and residents to achieve a better outcome. Council does support this, but is it happening? Not quite sure. The feeling is very negative, especially considering that the developer has chosen to go to VCAT before council made its decision. Plan Melbourne states that any development must not be at the expense of neighbourhood character. While neighbourhood character has definitely been compromised here, privacy is compromised here, I cannot believe that children from the local primary school will be at risk, amenity is at risk here, and in fact, so is the wellbeing. amenity is at risk here, and in fact, so is the wellbeing of the whole Kiamba community. 208 dwellings, as per this plan, is not a good outcome for this community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Council Judiciary Chair. Are there any further discussion? Council David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was just only last week, Madam Mayor, that we had a pack house again here by the Kiamba residents. All emotional, we had about 14 submitters. But before that, before the submitters came aboard, we had the developers, where the council spent about three quarter of an hour or more questioning the developer as to why this and why that. So, at the very end, I was taken by the principal, the school principal next door. He says, "I'm here to speak about my children." That's what he said. And then, he spoke about his children. He said, "I don't want my children to be watched from up top." 208 units of townhouses, that's a lot of units, and they were standing right on the border, right on the fence of the school. So, to me, I felt fully, principal, and gratefully, the rest of the submitters, the rest of the residents, which they all spoke with an emotion. I really, I didn't understand why they went all the way, it's sort of just... And mind you, they said, every one of them, all the submitters, they said that we need a development, we support the development, but that we don't want these 208 units standing upright. But it's appealing, and I'm sure the call of the council is here today, and I think the officers, rather, for coming up with a report as such. I think that's the right report, and I'm sure all the council is supporting it the same way as me.
Thank you, Council David. Council Headache?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support all that's been said before me. I did today, as I do always when there are planning considerations coming to council, have a drive around, and I saw a beautiful sight. I also had a think about, well, what's going on here? Why is the developer doing what he's doing, taking a legal avenue to VCAT, when he could be sitting down and talking to the council and coming to a conclusion that benefits himself, but also benefits the community and benefits the environment? I formed the view that this particular developer has a motive around, I guess, profit, and that it made me think about the Banking Royal Commissioner and the Justice Hine findings, where he said, banks do have a legal licence to operate, and a business does too, but they also have a social licence to operate, and in this case, an environmental licence to operate. The community matters, so do the trees and the wildlife and the biodiversity in that particular site. So for me, it's a real issue that we have a developer with an attitude like he has. And I think, for me, I think the 200-plus units is an overdevelopment, and I will support the recommendation of the officers here in this particular case. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Headache. Council Tron, you would like to speak?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support what all other councillors have already mentioned, but I just would like to ask all, it's like, we all want to have the development for our community, but this one is not acceptable. We 200 and I doing it for un-safety and un-privacy, for the road, for the traffic management, in the role, the president, the soilist, and the vital assess, in route parking area, both internal and visitor, is not enough and not safety. Any traffic management is not in loose allocation of the transport, and also the car parking for all the building and for the visitor, is, I think, is not enough, and also it blocked all the way, and also the boundary environment, is the building with two and three store, is no environment for plant or tree, no have the path for the child, also is no space for the childcare or kindergarten with the big development like this. So I strongly must support this petition. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Tron. Councillors, are there any further speakers? Council Fan?
I don't want to repeat myself with all what has been said by our fellow councillor, but I just want to have few words, that I feel this development sounds very greedy in terms of the number of the drilling that want to be in this lot of land. There's no train or tram that close by this site, they're only a bus, but would that enough to cater for that many residents? And so, assuming there's not enough public transport to go to that site, would be assuming people had to drive there. And there's no clear vision about enough car parking spaces. And even if it's just enough, then the road will be too small for emergency vehicle to enter in the emergency situation. Talking about emergency, that's the basic needs, I think the basic requirement for any development, and I feel too scared if this apartment or drilling side by side, if a fire or very serious situation happened, how can emergency vehicle go in and out quickly? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Fan. Council Langishie?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I would certainly support the comments that have been made so far, very clearly, and endorse the officer recommendation as well. And I don't think I've got a lot to add in terms of all the comments that have been made about density and the traffic and all those sort of things. The only thing is, the inner municipality like Brimbank, you know, we have changing demographic circumstances, and I just feel that with the five school sites that have been sold off across our municipality, that there was an opportunity for the government to have regard to our changing demographics, and do something which would meet the changing population needs of the area, and this plan has certainly not done that. It's just another residential cover-up, but a more intensive residential cover-up, and it's missed an opportunity to meet the needs, I think, of an aging population, and they've done that again and again. So I'm quite disappointed in this, and disappointed in this very intense development. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Langishie. Council Borg?
Well, I would like to endorse what my fellow councillors have already said, and I also will be endorsing the report by the officers. I believe that this has been a very overdevelopment that didn't take into account, obviously, the interests of the community and put the profits first. So, again, I endorse what has been said by fellow councillors and the report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Given that everyone's spoken, I'm the only one that's left, and I'm not allowed to speak, so I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. You're in this league. So, I know there's a lot of people here that were here for that item, you're free to leave or stay, however you would like to. And that would be a great result. We might just wait a few moments while the crowd clears. Okay, councillors, we will now move on. Sorry, we'll just wait one moment. Okay, the next item on the agenda is item 12.4, which is Application to amend planning permit P298-2016 for buildings and works to delete the 90 space childcare centre and replace with two additional levels of office, bringing the building to nine stories, with further reduction in the associated car parking requirement at 12 Clark Street in Sunshine. Mr Walsh, would you mind introducing this report for us, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, as you've outlined, the purpose of the report is to provide council with an assessment of the amendments sought to the planning permit, the existing planning permit. The assessment is attached to the report. Council advertised, or we advertised the application to amend the permit and received five submissions. They've been considered as part of the assessment. The officer recommendation is that council enters into a 173 agreement to manage the parking and lieu payments, or the reduction in car parking, and once the 173 agreement has been entered into the council, or entered into and registered on title, the council issues a notice of decision to amend the planning permit, subject to changes as outlined in attachment filed to the report.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions in relation to this item? Council Langishie?
Through you, Madam Mayor. The, it just, it wasn't clear whether the applicant had, I was aware of the full recommendation here, and was in agreement with that recommendation.
Mr Walsh, would you like to answer that question?
Yes, I, Madam Mayor. Through you, Madam Mayor, yes, the applicant hears.
Any further questions? Council Headache?
Just a clarification question. The reason that we're travelling down this pathway, as I understand, I just look like this confirmed, is that we've had a VCAT decision which has resulted in a much lower rate of spaces per hundred square metres of floor area, and that the consideration by VCAT of an application like this would likely be unsuccessful if we applied for that 2.9 rate again. Is that the way to frame the question?
Yes, in, yes, it is, council, or through you, Madam Mayor, yes, it is. So, council officers have made the assessment against the Brimbank Planning Scheme, as is required under the Act, and in undertaking that assessment, has been mindful of the attitudes of the application of the existing policy by VCAT.
Does that answer your question, Council Headache? Councillors, any further questions? Council Langishie?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Just the, do we have an understanding of what the likely rate income from this would be to back into transport-related infrastructure?
Mr Walsh, would you like to answer that question?
Madam Mayor, I'll take that on notice and provide it to council tomorrow.
Thank you. Councillors, any further questions or points of clarification? No? Is there a move on the motion? Council Papafouliou is moving the motion. Is there a second down? Council Judiciary Chair? Council Papafouliou, would you like to speak to this motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fellow councillors, the application to amend the current permit plans for buildings and works to delete the 90 space childcare centre and replace with two additional levels of office, and a further reduction in car parking bays cannot be accepted. A few months ago, we approved the amendment to...
Sorry, Council Papafouliou? Are you seeking to, you've moved a motion to support the application? Are you wishing to speak against?
Against. Against. So you, so I can't move it then?
Well, you've moved it now. You've moved it now. So we need to, we'll need to deal with the motion that's on the table? You've moved it, you can...
Okay, I might repeat some of this. A few months ago, we approved the amendment to the previous plans because we perceived that a childcare centre would be a much-needed service for people who work in Sunshine, and now this has been withdrawn. We had also expressed a number of concerns with the parking bay allocations of dropping off, and dropping off parking bays. The developer is now requesting to reduce this by 90 car parking spaces, and on the current plans, which I believe we cannot accept. We are well aware that parking is an issue in Sunshine now. To allow this amendment planning permit to go ahead, we are creating further issues with parking and traffic.
Thank you. Thank you, Council Papafouliou. And I'm assuming that you're foreshadowing a motion to decline the permit if this one is lost? Council Judiciary Chair, as a second, would you like to speak for this motion?
I will speak. Not sure whether I'm going to speak for or against. I think I'm going to reluctantly have to accept this motion, Madam Mayor, simply because at the planning forum, it's made very clear what the developer was trying to do, and despite our best efforts last time when this application came to us, we refused it to council, and then VCAT went ahead and did it, and gave them the permit anyway. So, is it a waste of officers' time? Is it a waste of council's money, when we know that VCAT is actually going to approve it? I suppose we would have to test the case. However, I think that precedent has been set. We are going to be getting some money for the car parking spaces. I will look forward to getting the answer from Mr Walsh on the transport-related infrastructure within the Sunshine Activity Centre, but with the Activity Centre being enlarged and being a metropolitan activity centre, this is something I think that's going to happen, whether we like it or not. So I suppose I'm going to be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Judiciary Chair. Councillors, is there anyone else that would like to speak for or against this item? Council David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and it's, I echo those words by Council Judiciary put forward. Indeed, it's something that somehow I, who I like development, I love development, and I wanted to come and build as much as they can in Sunshine. But somehow this developer, I didn't have that sort of feeling with him at the very, very beginning, if you like. He came before us two or three times, asking ways, and at the very end, he's changed his mind for something else. However, in this instance, and Council Judiciary is right, being running this centre of the year, Sunshine Hub, Super Hub, if you like, I think it's, even if we change up to it, I think it will win this case at VCAT. That's my feeling. So, getting some money out of it to perhaps cater for the parking, I think is of the doctorate, and I like to support.
Thank you, Council David. Council Hoot?
What a dilemma. With this particular site, and the history of it, and what's gone on, continues to create a tension in community. We have the big road side, the Withers Street Car Park, which is a source of daily frustration for local residents. It's a bit of a nightmare. We've had the development approval, we've had changes, we've had VCAT decisions that have overridden council decisions, we've ended up with this before us tonight. For me, I look across the road at the multi-deck and try to work out how we can solve the problem. We still have to solve that problem through this council chambers by considering what we do there with an extension. There is a set of funds being offered here that might go towards something like that, or some transport improvement around the area, but for me, I feel pincet that my gut tells me that we need, you know, to support more car parking in the area. My gut tells me that we won't go to VCAT if we don't put this through. My gut tells me that we will have to do something additional at the multi-deck, but we haven't done it yet. So there are uncertainties all around, and that is the dilemma we're faced with tonight. So for me, tonight, with what we have in front of us and where we stand in the decision-making process with a number... with a number of decisions we still have to make, I think sadly that I have to put my vote towards supporting this, even though I know that it is going to have an impact on car parking in the area immediately, once it happens. But to lose at VCAT and to get nothing from it is a worse outcome. So that's my dilemma. And so tonight, I make that contribution to this debate and I will vote accordingly, but it is with some, I guess, reluctance that I vote this way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Hittich. Are there any other speakers? Councillor Allen?
Thank you. I guess when Councillor Hittich supports something that loses car spaces, you know, it's a tough one. But it is, it's a rock and a hard place. And yeah, it's, you know, I don't see it going in our favour if it went to VCAT. It's just, unfortunately, it's the lesser of, you know, which one do you hate more? Well, I hate this one a little less. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Councillor Langishy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, I have to agree with the range of comments that have been made tonight. And I think the term dilemma is probably a pretty good comment. I recall that we did support the childcare centre, which seemed reasonable. But then was quite taken back by the following action sometime later to then suggest that we take out a floor of car parking to allow development. In the sense of, I did raise the question at the time with the developer, I recall, is that the car parking wasn't that provided? Wasn't there a guarantee? Wasn't that provided for the people in the building? And to be told that the people in the building had to either lease or rent those car parking spaces, those ones hadn't been taken up and therefore it was an opportunity to redevelop that site. And it was not the way I would have approached the car parking issue. I believe that this car parking would be provided for the whole development. Not a further internal agreement over leasing, renting or some arrangement with tenants about the car parking. So I was quite disappointed about that aspect of it. We're now down to this point, we're at VCAT. And I also agree that there'll be traffic studies which will justify this. They'll take it to VCAT and they'll win. And we will miss an opportunity to do something for transport-related in the future. So, look, I've got to support the recommendation. And I'm just disappointed how it's all come about this way, but I think I've got to support it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Langishy. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Fan?
I think we see another greedy development that come up as well. I have to also support it because the fact that it putting in front of me that we're going to lose at VCAT, but don't even like my point of this proposal from the beginning. And I'm feeling scared. I don't know who we dealing with, leading us from one thing to another thing, to another thing in the same building and go so much against a lot of community opinion. So I personally think this is a hard decision to make for myself. But forcibly, I have to go to the decision of supporting it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Fan. Is there any other discussion on this item? Councillors? Councillor Trum?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think with me, it is also it hard to make decision on this one. We are about, we need the car park, but we also need the childcare aspect. Or in Sunshine, we see a lot of development...
Sorry, Councillor Fan, this is to remove the childcare centre and to create two floors of office space?
Yeah. No, I mean, it's like, it's very hard to make decision. I know it's when the remove to childcare is really big issue for the member in the community. That's a concern for the member and community, especially for the business people around in Sunshine. They have the young children. So it's very hard for them. That's a concern and it's an issue from the member or also from the business in the community dressing. So that's why I say it's hard to make decision. We know we can't again with VCAT. But how about our community, as I mentioned?
Thank you, Councillor Trum. Are there any other speakers on this item? No? Councillor Papafoulios, I'll allow you the right of reply because you're the speaker against your motion. If you'd like to speak?
No, I think I'll confuse people. So I'll just leave it for councillors to make the decision.
Okay. So I'll put the item to the vote. All those in favour? All those against?
Madam Mayor, I request a division, please.
Thank you, Councillor Papafoulios. Councillor Papafoulios has asked for a division. So can I please ask you all to stand? Oh no, sorry, sit down. And I'll ask for the vote again. When I ask for the vote, then you can stand until I read your name and then you may sit down while I read your name. So all those in favour? Councillor Fan, Councillor Langishy, Councillor David, Councillor Hittich, Councillor Allen, Councillor Tarkos, Councillor Borg, Councillor Judy Chair. All those against? Councillor Trum, Councillor Papafoulios and Councillor Congru. Thank you, carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number 12.5, which is planning activity update and delegate decisions for May 2019. And Mr Walsh, can I please ask you to introduce this report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report provides council with the status of planning permit applications and trends in planning approvals in Brimbank. It also provides council with information on the decisions made under delegated authority in May of this year regarding planning permit applications and other matters. The report is for council to note the activity in line with attachment line.
Thank you, Mr Walsh. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Langishy?
Through you, Madam Mayor, I recommend the officers' report.
Thank you. And is there a second, Madam Mayor? Councillor Judy Chair? And would you like to speak to the motion, Councillor Langishy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A very quick comment. I noticed that for May 2019, the cost of development is nearly 120 million. And for May 2018, it was around 92 million. I think it's been said month after month that that sort of value shows a lot of support for development in Brimbank. And that, of course, is creating a lot of jobs. So again, it's a very healthy sign for Brimbank in sort of relatively uncertain economic times. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Langishy. And with the second, would you like to speak, Councillor Judy Chair? Any other speakers? Councillor Hittich?
Very quickly, my prosperous Brimbank hat on. Seventy-five sharps red Toleman, a big extension, doubling the size of a data centre out there. Great investment, Water Gardens extension, 30 mil, 66 somewhere else. And also some big residential developments around the area as well. Brimbank's kicking.
Thank you, Councillor Hittich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now moving on to item 12.6, which is the return of supplementary valuations 2018, 2019. And Mr Ma, would you please introduce your report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is for council to consider supplementary valuations carried out during the period 1st of July 2018 to 30th of April 2019. Supplementary valuations are mainly caused by the creation of new lots through subdivision, erection or demolition of buildings or the consolidation of properties into one title. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion?
So, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Judy Chair moving. Seconded, Councillor Hittich. Councillor Judy Chair, would you like to speak to the item?
No, that's Madam Mayor.
Councillor Hittich? No? Any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? I'll put it straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.7, which is a governance report for June 2019. Mr Hogan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The monthly governance report is a standing item within the council agenda. It is a summary of recent governance activity in accordance with best practice and good governance principles and in compliance with the Local Government Act 1989.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. And councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a move on?
Yes, Madam Mayor. And with an amended motion, just with some minor amendments to attachment two, I'll move the motion, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And do we have those amendments?
I believe that Mr Sakurai has those amendments, Madam Mayor. That will be noted in a minute.
Okay. Is there a second of this item? Seconded, Madam Mayor. Seconded, Councillor Tarkos. Would you like to speak to the item?
Just simply, Madam Mayor, as Mr Hogan has said, it is a monthly governance report. It is our usual report outlining lots of activity with councillors attending meetings, advocating. And of course, we also have the revised Brimbank Collective Action Committee revised terms of reference. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Judy Chair. Councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak as a second?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other discussion on this item, councillors? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now to item 12.8, which is councillor Portfolio's quarterly report, March to May 2019. Mr Hogan, wrap again.
Thank you, again. The purpose of this quarterly report is to update council on the key activities of councillor portfolios. This particular report relates to the period of March through May 2019.
Thank you, Mr Hogan. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a move on? Councillor Borg? Thank you, as printed in the papers. And Councillor Allen, second. Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to the item? No discussion? Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm the Brimbank proud portfolio councillor, which covers key areas such as tourism, marketing, branding, community consultation and communication. So I'm very proud to announce that we've completed our very own visitor tourist map called Experience Brimbank. See here. So the stats tell us, when people come to visit, they shop local, they spend local and they experience local. This map will help showcase what makes Brimbank so great. So you can see there's the key items there.
Councillor Allen, to the chair.
No, sorry. And there's also items on the back there. But just wanted to mention that, yeah, keep an eye out for it in local libraries and civic centres and motels.
Thank you, Councillor Allen. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Tarkos?
Madam Mayor, thank you. As advocacy portfolio holder, along with yourself, it's been a very robust and busy period for us as well in the increasing needs for advocacy for Brimbank. Just some of the advocacy updates which I'd like to share today with our portfolio is that we had the Members of Parliament Roundtable, of which all councillors participated in. We're continuing our robust campaign with the St Albans Health and Wellbeing Centre, state and federal election strategy advocacy update. There's also a new collateral proposed for our communication strategy, which is going forward, is very innovative and exciting. It's still under wraps, but it will be an exciting strategy. We also had plenty of media updates. We also attended the ALGA conference, of which we had three successful take-ups of our motions at the Assembly of all the councils across Australia, which is great. And also, we have a federal election summary and budget implications for Brimbank coming up this week, just to name a few. And the continuous advocacy we make in regards to the Sunshine Super Hub and the Mall. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Councillors, any further discussion on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Judy Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor. My portfolio is the innovation one. We have been very busy talking about quite a few things at the innovation portfolio, a couple of which are the council's portal project, which has been rolled out, Madam councillors, even though there's been a few hiccups, but I'm sure that they will be sorted out. We also have the power purchase agreement, which I believe is coming to council next month. And that potentially could save council lots of money in power purchase. And we also had the innovative, there was another project issue that was most interested, what was the kindergarten participation project, where children were tracked, going to kindergarten. Why were they weren't going to kindergarten if they were getting there late? Why were they getting there late? And in fact, that'll inform a lot of the future funding for kindergarten projects to see where the gaps can be in finding, finding out why children are not going to kindergarten. As we know, going to kindergarten is one of the most important things that children can do in their early years. So that's one that I will be following with great interest to see how we can come up with a report on that to find out why exactly it is that children aren't attending kindergarten and how we can help the parents and the mothers to understand how important kindergarten is. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Judy Chair. Councillors, any further discussion in portfolios? Councillor Hittich?
Just one item, Madam Mayor. I wanted to talk just briefly about the municipal industry analysis and clusters development action plan that's being undertaken at the moment. This particular piece of work is dear to my heart. We have an issue in Brimbank where 70% of people are leaving Brimbank to go to work. And the people that come to Brimbank to work, 70% of them come from outside of municipality. We need to turn that around over time. And this municipal industry analysis will help us understand what industries we have in place at the moment, what the strength of those industries in comparison to others and what we might be able to work on in terms of sustainable new industries going forward. So for me, I think it's a really important piece of work that will help us have a look at our economy, our jobs and what we need to do as a council to facilitate a lot of that action happening over time. So I look forward to that piece of work coming to council soon.
Thank you, Councillor Hittich. Any further discussion on this item, councillors? No? Okay, I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item number 12.9, which is draft neighbourhood houses and community centres strategy and action plan 2019 to 2024. Miss Brackett, would you mind introducing your report for us, please?
Thank you, Chair. The development of neighbourhood houses and community centre strategy and action plan is in action in council's current year to council plan. And the purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft neighbourhood houses and community centre strategy and action plan as attachment line to the report for community consultation. And then following this, a further report outlining any submissions received and presenting a final draft will be presented to council later in the year at a future council meeting for consideration.
Thank you, Miss Brackett. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion, councillors? Councillor Borg?
I move the motion as printed in the papers.
Thank you, Councillor Borg. Seconded, Councillor Tarkos. And Councillor Borg, would you like to speak to this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor. As councillor for the Brimbank People Portfolio, I'm pleased to talk about the draft neighbourhood house strategy 2019. The draft strategy is based on extensive community consultation and overview of all current research and data. Some key findings are, young people want access to community spaces. Some cultural groups, including Pacifica and African communities, are not accessing neighbourhood houses, community centres. Community members want safe spaces to be involved in intercultural exchanges and activities. Neighbourhood houses are uniquely positioned to have social impact around some of the most challenging issues that Brimbank faces. They offer informal spaces that are flexible, accessible and family-friendly. The draft strategy will inform the Brimbank Neighbourhood House Strategy Partnership between council managed and community managed neighbourhood houses in Brimbank. It offers council the opportunity to take a lead in social innovation and best practice to increase community wellbeing. It also maximizes the benefits of council managed neighbourhood houses and community centres through strong leadership, governance and partnerships with all levels of government, educational institutions and research bodies. I commend this... I commend this report to council.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Tarkos, as a seconder, would you like to speak?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, yes, um, just to uh, preiterate what councillor Borg said, but also of our seven sites, which includes a mix of neighbourhood houses and community hubs, are in many ways, like our sports clubs and centres, are the glue that keep our communities connected. Beyond the bricks and mortar are real-life stories of transformation that give people hope to grow, to learn, to interact, and also contribute back to our community. This cannot be quantified by budget, uh, in my opinion, because what they do goes beyond the budget and builds community. Some of the quotes I wish to share illustrate just how important they are. And there is a growing and not lessening need for them to provide valuable interface for everyone across all cultures, all ages, all classes, and all abilities. One user of our neighbourhood houses, I quote, "It's where I feel comfortable and have learned English. My children have gone to playgroup there and tennis lessons at our community centre," unquote. This is one of the many profound statements of the transformation that our neighbourhood houses, our hubs, create. I fully endorse this report and that we continue to invest more in these programmes that contribute to the growth and resilience of our community. I encourage our community to respond to the draft strategy on how we can improve that reach and strengthen the governance. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Is there any further discussion on this item? Councillors?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Judy Chair?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam Mayor, this is an important piece of work as part of the year two council plan, with specific themes arising connectivity, skills and knowledge, partnerships using community, all themes that resonate with our Brimbank First policy. I welcome this draft strategy. An enormous amount of work has gone into it with many people consulted throughout the process. It now will go out for general consultation, and I urge the community to have their say. I certainly look forward to receiving the feedback from our community. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judy Chair. Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support everything that's been said before me. Um, I look at the strategic document and the first two lines that, well, two lines that struck me. Uh, the first one, Brimbank community is at the centre of council's first neighbourhood house and community centre strategy. And the second one is that building on our strengths from the past, we are reimagining neighbourhood houses and community centres that are for everyone, from every background, at every stage of life, and every stage of learning. Um, that is a really ambitious strategy and a fabulous one. Uh, we do need to really work around this. I mentioned earlier in the budget discussions how we have a social disadvantage and, you know, a budget that we need to think about how we put more into addressing that. Um, this particular strategy, I think, has a real sense of hope in it for me. Um, I think there will be tensions in it. Neighborhood houses and community centres aren't always the same sorts of organisations. A lot of people love their neighbourhood houses, others love their community centres. And um, you know, what will be in the future might be something a little bit different. But we don't know that yet because we haven't reimagined it, and the purpose of this community consultation is to start that process. Uh, we've got a strategic document to help people understand the thinking that's going on at the moment, and to have the conversation within their communities. But for me, um, we know the value, as councillors have said already, of these particular neighbourhood houses and community centres and the potential value they have into the future. And I guess I look forward to having the conversations with the community to help us realise that potential over time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.10, Neighborhood Character Study, May 2019. And Mr. Walsh, would you please introduce the report?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that. Uh, the purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft Neighborhood Character Study, May 2019, which is at attachment one for the purposes of undertaking community consultation. Uh, section two of the report outlines our approach to the six-week consultation. Um, and in addition to that, we will bear in mind your response to the question, uh, the public question earlier this evening. Uh, the recommendation from the officers is for council to endorse the draft for the purposes of undertaking community consultation for six weeks, and invites written submissions. Um, once that period is closed, uh, council will also receive a report outlining any submissions made on the draft and present back to council a final draft Neighborhood Character Study for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Councillors, any questions?
No question.
Okay. Questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Councillor Langish, would you like to move the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I would like to move the officer's recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Langish. Seconded, councillor Hiddich. Councillor Langish, would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, as portfolio councillor for Liverpool Brimbank Portfolio, which includes urban amenities and urban design, I'm pleased to talk about this draft study. Neighborhood character is the combination of public and private land, every property, public space, place, or piece of infrastructure makes a contribution whether great or small. It is the cumulative impact of all these contributions that establishes the neighbourhood character of an area. In March 2017, the Department of Environment, Land, Water, and Planning provided council three years to refine zone schedules. The Neighborhood Character Study will provide the strategic justification required to prepare the character objectives and design objectives, and will describe the character of the residential areas in Brimbank. It will provide guidelines about the preferred character, future character of each area. This may result in direction to protect and enhance the existing character or support changes in the character to strive towards new preferred neighbourhood character. The study also provides direction in what design response should be provided. Uh, Madam Mayor, all too often we've seen applications come before council and probably haven't given as much regard to neighbourhood character as we would have liked to have seen. Um, certainly, um, in terms of the assessment under RESCODE. Uh, this certainly fills a government requirement, but it certainly fills very much a community requirement that is of considerable interest to the community regarding our three residential zones and having good regard to the character in those areas. So it will strengthen that aspect of our assessment of development in those areas. And that's something I think the community will strongly support, certainly something I strongly support. So I would certainly recommend, uh, that the community should take advantage of this consultation period, look closely at the provisions of this study, and certainly give us your feedback so that we can have those sort of things built into the scheme in advance before we consider planning applications. So I'd certainly recommend the enormous amount of work that's been done by our staff in this study, in this work, and recommend this report to council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Langish. Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak?
I would, Madam Mayor. Um, this particular piece of work is a really important piece of work for Brimbank and for the communities within Brimbank. The eleven character types and the matrix across the three existing residential zones, residential growth zone, general residential zone, and the neighbourhood residential zone is, has a complexity to it, um, but it also has some nuances to it. Um, I think we've heard at public question time tonight, there are, we do, for example, have the old HV McCade legacy through the Albion subdivision there. And there is a sentiment around that some of the, I guess, neighbourhood character of of the Albion area has been lost since the seventies, since there has been a general development of flats and changes in accommodation over time. And that people are concerned that they don't want to lose more of that character without sufficient protections in place in documents like these around neighbourhood character. Uh, so I think it's really important that council does consult and consult well with the local communities around this. In particular, we've heard from the Albion, Albion Adia Community Centre and residents from that area, and I've had conversations with others in other organisations today, that there is a sentiment around that says good, strong consultation is needed here. And we do need to identify those areas of, I guess, neighbourhood character, long-term neighbourhood character that people feel are in decline in some areas because of the way the planning scheme is working at the moment. Uh, for me, I take councillor Langish's point that the community does want to see a strengthening of community outcomes around this particular piece of work, that neighbourhood character is something that people do want to see protected in their communities. People move into Brimbank, we've heard many times, because of the big blocks, the spaces, the great place to bring up kids and so on. Yet in many cases, we see applications becoming core council to take that away. So we do have dilemmas. We always have dilemmas at council. But I guess in this particular case, the piece of work is essential. We do need it. Uh, but I do encourage councillors to support a, I guess, an emphasis on those areas where neighbourhood character does need to be protected. And when we consider the documentation coming back after consultation, we make sure we include that in our thinking. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Judy Chair?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Um, this is a very welcome report, Madam Mayor, most particularly in the context of previous planning permit applications, the most recent one being this evening on Driscoll's Road. Neighborhood character's always been a contentious point in planning applications. And now we have a framework to be able to better argue our point with developers and also VCAT. A lot of work has gone into this study with every bit of Brimbank being examined to arrive at eleven character types and eleven schedules so that RESCODE clauses can be varied. It is a strategic document which will set the vision for our city. I welcome this study and endorse it for consultation. I also wish to thank all involved, particularly the planning staff in the formulating of this document. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judy Chair. Any further discussion, councillors, on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now up to item 12.11, which is Council Plan Action Plan 2018-2019 Third Quarter Progress Report. And Mr. Hogan, may you please introduce your report?
Certainly. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council is asked to note the implementation of the council plan, year two annual action plan, as at the third quarter of the current financial year 2018-2019.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Councillors, questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Zero motion. Councillors?
Shall I move, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Judy Chair? Seconded? Seconder? Councillor Papafolio? Would you like to speak to the item?
No, thanks, Madam Mayor.
No? Would the seconder like to speak? No? Any further discussion on this item? Councillors? No? Go straight to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we are now moving on to item 12.12, Final Draft Response Strategy to Western Rail Plan Including Melbourne Airport Rail Link and Sunshine Super Hub, June 2019. And Mr. Walsh, may I ask you to introduce the report, please?
Of course, Madam Mayor. Thank you. Uh, the purpose of this report is for council to consider the final draft of Brimbank Response Strategy to the Western Rail Plan, including the Melbourne Airport Rail Link and the Sunshine Super Hub, June 2019. Uh, following consultation on the initial draft. Uh, we received nineteen submissions and they have been considered, and our response is outlined in attachment two. Uh, the officer recommendation to council is that, having considered the submissions received, that council adopt the, uh, the the Brimbank Response Strategy attached to attachment one. Uh, in addition to that, the council writes to submit us thanking them for their submissions to the draft um, and advising them of council's decision. Um, and that we also write to a range of ministers advising them of council's decision this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Zero motion?
I'd like to move the motion with minor amendment, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
The motion as per the papers, but with a change, uh, that in A, that reflects the words coming up on the screen at the moment, with the following amendment to Action 1.1 of the Strategy under Objective 1, changing a high-level steering committee overseeing the transport of projects delivery to a high-level steering committee overseeing transport projects, precinct planning, and delivery of the community vision.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Third seconded for this item, councillor Tarkos? Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak? Zero motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, can I first of all congratulate the officers involved and also the advocates that have done a whole lot of work, including myself and councillor Tarkos in this particular domain? I know that the CEO and officers have been exceptionally busy, uh, working with other departments, state and federal, and various organisations to bring this piece of work together. It's a substantial piece of work, a really great piece of work, and I think it is really reflective of where we are at this point in time uh, in developing this really important, this really important major project, but also helping, or playing our role in delivering the Western Rail Plan in conjunction with the state and federal governments and various others. Uh, for me, the amendment was made because we went on a tour to Canberra last week and we talked to the ACT Renewal Authority, and we talked about how that organisation delivered some great outcomes for community, uh, implementing the vision that was required. And we argue in this document, we see in the attachment, attachment one, Response Strategy, that there is a piece of work to develop a community vision there, and there is a piece of work to make sure that that community vision is implemented in the rail projects that will go on with the transport super hubs and the various other pieces of rail infrastructure around, down the Valerian Corridor and Geelong and so on, with railway stations in Adia and Deport. But there's also all the other important infrastructure that needs to go around this transport investment, and that is the housing, the education and training facilities, uh, you know, the Performing Arts, the National Gallery of Victoria, um, a tractor that will get people off the stations. We need to envisage all that with community, and this particular response strategy allows us to do that in a very orderly way with a lot of immediate, particular projects to do, and then some more medium and longer term ones over time. But for me, a great piece of work. Congratulations again to all the officers and the executive tenure at council for the work they've done. It's substantial. And I commend the piece of work to councillors.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Seconded, would you like to speak? Councillor Tarkos?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I would like to echo councillor Hiddich's words. I'd also like to say that this is really exciting in that it encourages business attraction and development of opportunities, not just in Sunshine, but the entire of Brimbank. Uh, shared spaces, commercial offices, hotels, conference centres, restaurants. We already have several major food precincts, which include Sunshine, St Albans Water Gardens, and Kewlock Park, Madam Mayor, is developing into an exciting food precinct at the moment, uh, with restaurants and we've got a brewery and New York, um, cafe opening soon. But besides all that, the development of precincts is the jobs that's the exciting part for me. Uh, wearing my advocacy portfolio hat, what I see is opportunities of social procurement, jobs for our local youth, our residents, as councillor Hiddich indicated before, that most of our residents move out of Brimbank to work. These are opportunities with this kind of investment that we could attract people to stay here, work here, live here, and spend here. Uh, we also saw from my fellow councillor extremely exciting tourism map. Well, we can incorporate that in our investment strategies within this response uh, to the Western Rail and the Mall, where people can stop here, stay, visit these exciting tourist precincts, and also perhaps spend a whole weekend here, which would be great. Um, so the council's ability to leverage of this transformation is so important and crucial. And we in the advocacy area will be working very hard. We've established an MOU with the airport where there could be opportunities there to train our local youth in aviation. We're exploring every possible asset that will assist our youth and also promote a strong and robust economy here in Brimbank. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. Is there any other discussion on this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Judy Chair?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, this is another wonderful plan affirming the policies and strategies around the West. For us, the Mall is a game changer. Sunshine will, a game changer. Did I say that correctly? Okay, sorry. Sunshine will be the capital of the West. Development and investment will be encouraged and indeed will happen. And many opportunities will arise, as councillor Tarkos has said, in the areas of skills, learning, training, and jobs, and increased economic benefits across the Western region. This response does show that we as a council need to continue to have a say on the future of the West and to have a place at the table in future discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judy Chair. Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, the city of Brimbank will be highly benefiting from a key infrastructure project to be delivered across metropolitan Melbourne. These include the Western Rail Plan, which will also facilitate the Melbourne Airport rail link and associated Sunshine Super Hub. This is a lifetime opportunity for the city in terms of investment from the state and federal governments. Considering the importance and the scale of these investments, it's important that council clearly articulates its aspirations and key asks in order to ensure that the projects deliver the opportunities, benefits and broad based uplifts of this investment. Like my previous councillor, I would like to thank all the council officers, the executive team and everyone involved in this strategy. I know a lot of work has been put into it and I want to commend this to council.
Thank you, council board. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No one's spoken against it, councillor Hiddich? Someone speaks again, so you lose your, you lose your wrap up ability. Okay, no further discussion? No? We'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. And now we move on to item 12.13, which is final draft Sunshine Station Super Hub Urban Design Principles. And Mr Whiteside, your debut performance this evening?
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider adopting the final draft, Sunshine Station Super Hub Urban Design Principles, add attachment one to the report. As per the previous report on the response strategy to the Western Rail Plan, community consultation on the draft urban design principles was undertaken for four weeks. And based on the submissions, the draft urban design principles have been updated and a final draft are now presented to council for consideration for adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? We move on. Councillor Hiddich?
Move as per the business papers.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Seconder? Councillor David? Councillor Hiddich, would you like to speak to the item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I stand as the portfolio councillor for Prosperous Brimbane, which covers strategic planning, economic development, investment and job attraction. This is a really important project for the West, as we know. The Super Hub Urban Design Principles have been worked on for some time by officers and a great job they've done. They've been at it for a while. There's been a lot of consideration of various, I guess, feedback from councillors, but also a lot of feedback from community, a lot of great feedback from community and it's been incorporated in these now final design principles. It is important that we have these principles. We heard about it in Canberra the other day, how important it is to have both good urban design principles, architectural design principles and so on, so that we do get the outcomes that community wants and don't have something delivered to us that isn't satisfactory. I think the point that community consultation, good, strong community consultation has taken place is something that we need to reflect on, particularly as we go forward with the other rail projects. I guess, in my opinion, and I think in the opinion of all councillors around this table tonight, the importance of community engagement and consultation over the coming six to 12 months is massive. We have government departments and organisations going out and surveying community at the moment. And we need to be in that space as well, doing a coordinated effort where we can and where we can't, finding out what community wants from these as we go along. But community engagement and consultation for me over the next six to 12 months is something that is of critical importance to the success of these projects going forward. I guess we're also wanting to ensure that Sunshine Station Super Hub is developed as a high rated green building, demonstrating leadership and commitment to a sustainable future. And we're also wanting to create opportunities for the hub that will attract visitors to the Sunshine Metropolitan Activity Centre and have them stop and stay here rather than just passing through or changing trains. Someone rang me up yesterday and said, can you stop making things so bland? Can we put a few attractors into this to sharpen it up? How can we get people to stop? You know, we need to get them off. So the NGV, you know, outsourced office, where we've got art gallery and all sorts of other things, you know, a whole lot of indigenous work that we could put here on behalf of our underies and so on. Lots of ideas, but we need to go to consultation and get all that. So people are keen to get into it. I guess though, in the end, the report does help frame council's advocacy and the people who are doing the resilient Brimbane work at the moment and advocating everywhere across town and into Canberra and that for money and support here. Good luck to them. I think we've got a really great framework to support them going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Seconded to like to speak, councillor David. Will you second him?
I'm just very happy to be with the council.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Just something briefly to add, Madam Mayor, to all of councillor Hiddich's, what he said tonight. It will pave the way for Sunshine being on the map, so to speak, with our Super Hub. And of course, we would have had input with our urban design principles. I'm also glad that the hub has been suggested by someone submitted that it be a green building and public realm that will attract visitors to Sunshine Metropolitan Activity Centre. I'm sure, Madam Mayor, that H.R. McKay, when he was establishing his foundry here in Sunshine many years ago, would be quite pleased to understand and know that Sunshine will be once again on the map and be in the history making here with the construction of the Super Hub. So H.R. McKay's vision for Sunshine still lives on many years later. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Judicar. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we now move on to item 12.14, which is collective procurement, residual waste disposal, landfill recycling and advanced waste processing services. Mr Whiteside, would you mind introducing your report, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The purpose of this report is for council to consider participating in the Metropolitan Waste and Recycling Group's collaborative procurement process for landfill services, recycling processing services and future advanced waste processing services. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a motion? Councillor Ashy? Would you like to move the motion, please?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, I move the officer recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second to this item? Councillor Trum? And councillor Ashy, would you like to speak to this item?
Oh, just, Madam Mayor, this is of course something that's extremely important to council. There's been an enormous amount of work put in by the Metropolitan Waste Resource Recovery Group and by staff, and congratulations, the effort put in by staff on this matter. And this is certainly a move forward in that dealing with all those issues. So thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Trum, would you like to speak, as a seconder?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's, I guess, would like to congratulate on the team of the director. Neil, it's for all the staff, it's put an effort on this issue. I think for the recycle, it's recycling, it's really important and how it's like it reduce the waste of our community is the other important and all the planning for the landfill and the recycling is really successful.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Borg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As a local government, it is highly imperative to explore ways of dealing with waste. The current situation is not sustainable. The detrimental environmental, socio-economic and health impacts are now globally recognised. For example, one of our greatest contribution to pollution and toxicity in our atmosphere is the mismanagement of our food waste. It provides a large amount of methanin. Food waste can be composted and returned to our soil. According to an FAO study also, it estimates that each year approximately one third of our food produced for humans, for human consumption in the world is lost or wasted. Another interesting statistic is that in Australia, 85% of textiles we buy go to landfill each year. And this is according to the University of Queensland and we know and the what price we are paying regarding to these textiles when it comes to the environment. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Hiddich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I support all that's been said before. May I congratulate the officers for the piece of work they've done? I just wanted to raise one concern that I have, and I've said this privately to others. Today, we had a discussion about the Ravenhole decision. And I guess landfill, we know we need it for now. But we also in Victoria have developed a recycling, set of recycling processes that, in my opinion, should be significantly enhanced and that we should be trying to recycle as much as we can back into, you know, grass, into sand, into roads and tyres, into various other things and clothing and so on. That we need to encourage industry around those particular recycling processes. My worry is that we might get captured a bit too much by the advanced waste processing services, where we have waste to energy proposals, which are needed and need to be, you know, planned and considered. I know that the process that we have here enables council to step out of this process at different points along the way, but the further we go along the process, the harder it is to step out of it. So I'm putting my cap on and my watching, I have my washing brief with me to make sure that what we do as a council does balance it with a good, strong mix of recycling, some advanced waste processing and probably some landfill for a period of time to come. But for me, I don't think this planet can take a whole lot of incineration and then pulling more and more resources out of the ground to create new products that get burnt. And we have a very poor set of outcomes for both community, environment and everyone. So I support the recommendation to course tonight, but I watch the piece of work with interest as we go forward.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we're now moving on to item 12.15, which is a proposed sale of land at 130 McIntyre Road at Sunshine North. Now, I understand we may have a deferral motion.
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move for a deferral. Subject to a recall comes to council with a review of the land sales policy.
Thank you, councillor Papafio. Is there a second to that item? Councillor Hiddich? We treat that as procedural item, councillors. Can I just go to vote for a deferral motion? All those in favour of deferring? Carried. Deferral item to a future meeting. We will move now on to item 12.16, which is a draft JR Parsons Reserve Community Vision and Site Plan. Ms Brackett, would you mind introducing this report for us, please?
Thank you, Chair. The purpose of this report is for council to consider endorsing the draft JR Parsons Reserve Community Vision Site Plan, attachment one, and also a summary report at attachment two for community consultation. The draft plan establishes shared vision informed by many community consultation activities to date for both the function and use of the reserve. And the site plan has been credited guided as future development. A future report detailing any submissions received during the consultation period will be presented and put in final draft at a future council meeting consideration.
Thank you, Ms Brackett. Councillors, any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Is there a move or a motion on this item? Councillor Hiddich?
Move as per the business papers.
Thank you. Councillor Hiddich, seconded, councillor David. Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Hiddich?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, as Ms Brackett has said, has been a piece of work that's been subject to a considerable amount of community consultation to date. It's a tricky one. There are a range of factors at play here on this particular site. The consultants have come up with a community vision, a plan, and that plan needs to be taken to community for further engagement. There will be some people who support it, there will be others who don't. And we need to hear that as a council and consider those views when it comes back before council or later date. The plan has a number of great features in it. We have lots of improvements, some significant enhancements of walking tracks, of tennis courts, of, you know, cricket car park and ovals, new pavilions, all of that proposed. And it's a grand plan for Parsons Reserve. I think generally the community will welcome it, but there will be some, as I said, some nuances there that have to be worked through. But a really considerable piece of work and a lot of good thinking and good effort has gone into it. Thank you to the team involved and to all who've made a contribution. There's been quite a bit of it and it will take another step or two before it's reached yet. But let's have the conversation with the community first. I commend it to council.
Thank you, councillor Hiddich. Councillor David, would you like to speak to the motion?
Just very briefly, Madam Mayor. This community vision, great, great community vision, I must say, and officers worked hard to put it together. This might solve some of the, perhaps, bitterness, I must say, or perhaps jealousy between the two clubs for a long, long time now. So I think we'll solve the problem as we go along. So I'm looking forward to see the happening as we go along. And they're both, these two clubs, the football club, the cricket club and now the tennis club. They've got a great history here in Sunshine. And yeah, I'm looking forward to swap the chicks if you like, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor David. Councillors, any other discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we move on to item 12.17, road management plan review 2019. And Mr Whiteside, will you please introduce?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council officers completed a review of council's road management plan in 2018. The view, which included analysis of other council's road management plans, identified a number of opportunities to improve service standards in relation to the performance of council's duties under its road management functions, including changes to the responsibility for footpath over vehicle crossovers and changes to the trip hazard intervention level. Based on council's resolution at the ordinary council meeting on the AT in September last year, council officers undertook community consultation on the draft plan, which was at attachment two to this report. Following submissions from the community consultation process, the final draft road management plan has now been prepared for council's consideration. So the purpose of the report is for council to consider adopting the final draft road management plan 2019, which is attachment one to the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, any questions or points of question? Councillor Tacos?
Madam Mayor, I do have a question. It relates to the responsibility for footpath over vehicle crossover. Can I just get some clarification from our director, Mr Whiteside, in relation to now that landowners are responsible for ensuring the crossovers are maintained in safe condition? But will council be now looking after those vehicle crossovers and the construction? Can I just seek clarification? Thank you.
Mr Whiteside, would you answer that question?
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. Yes, so the intent of the final draft road management plan is in fact to make a change to the responsibility for the footpath section of the crossover. So as detailed in the final draft, there's also an attachment which details the clear responsibility, which would be subject to council's adoption of this report tonight, coming to effect from 1st of July 2019. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tacos. Then answer your question.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Is there any further questions or points of? Councillor Fan?
I have a question that this only apply to our road. How about the road that in the boundary of private property and Vicarows?
Mr Whiteside, is it?
So through you, Madam Mayor. The council's road management plan can only obviously be responsible for council roads. Ultimately, responsibility for other roads that are subject to other landowners or land management responsible, such as Vicarows. It's obviously their responsibility and they will have a road management plan in place for those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Whiteside. Councillors, any further questions or points of clarification on this item? No? Zero motion, councillors?
Shall we move, Madam Mayor?
Councillor Judicar moving. Is there a seconder? Seconder? Councillor Tacos? And would the member like to speak to the motion?
Just briefly, Madam Mayor, just to thank Mr Whiteside and his team for all this road management plan review and to also welcome the two amendments on the responsibility for footpath over vehicle crossover and also the trip hazards. I welcome those two amendments to our road management plan. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Judicar. Councillor Tacos, would you like to speak to the item? Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Allen?
Just like to say, it's really good to see that the footpath trip hazard has been changed from 50mm down to 25mm, which is really good. And I like the way it also now simplifies it for footpaths. You know, footpath in front of your house, it's all council. You know, it's only the driveway itself that's yours.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Fan?
I just remember a point of our footpath being treated very badly by some other organisation like NBN, you know, like senior... you know, like senior sports. So we, the work that we've been doing with our footpath and then getting digging up by other organisation and not getting looked after well, I think we also need to look into it very carefully and make sure that they maintain it to the level that we be with them.
Thank you, councillor Fan. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried. Okay, we've got a few contracts coming forward. I'm not sure if we want to go through them individually or if we want to move on.
Well, we've had the 12.18, 12.19 and 12.20 you just block.
Thank you. Councillor Duttich, councillors, we've got a mover to move on block. Is there a seconded for that item? Councillor Papafodeos, any discussion on that? No? Put it straight to the vote. All those in favour?
Thank you.
Carried. Item 12.18, 12.19 and 12.20. So we are now finished the officer reports this evening. We'll move on to item 13, which is notices of motion. And there are two notices of motion this evening. So we'll move straight to item 13.1, which is a notice of motion relating to recovering and reprocessing resource, resources from waste. And councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this notice of motion? No? Councillor Tarkos, would you like to move your motion?
Yes, I would like to move this motion as put out in business papers. Madam Mayor, would you like me to read the motion?
No, it's fine.
Everyone can read it, thank you.
And is there a seconded for that motion, councillor Trum? And councillor Tarkos, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, in 2016 to 17, Victorians generated and managed nearly 12.9 million tonnes of waste. Metropolitan Melbourne accounted for around 80% of this. Sustainability Victoria estimates that Victorians recovered 67% of the 12.9 million tonnes of that recycling and sent the remaining 33% to landfill. Community participation in recycling process is vital, part of the state's waste system. To invest their time in separating bottles, papers and other recyclables, Victorians need confidence that these materials are being properly recycled. The Chinese government's decision to significantly restrict its importation of recyclables under the Chinese rule policy has significantly affected our own recycling industry and led to a significant decline in Victorian waste exports, which has led to somewhat of a crisis with waste management. The Victorian Auditor General's Office, V A G O, completed an independent assurance report entitled Recovering and Reprocessing Resources from Waste. The audit examined whether responsible agencies are providing the strategic direction, support and effective regulation in order to maximise the recovery and reprocessing of resources from Victoria's waste streams. The audit included the Department of Environment, Land, Water and Planning, D W E L P, the Environment Protection Authority, E P A, the Metropolitan Waste and Resource Recovery Group, Sustainability Victoria and Banual City Council and the City of Monash Council. The audit found that D W E L P, Sustainability Victoria and E P A have not responded strategically to waste and resource recovery issues. D W E L P have not fulfilled its leadership role within the waste portfolio. The E P A has not effectively regulated waste management and Sustainability Victoria have not effectively developed and implemented a waste strategy. As such, they are not maximising the processing of resources from waste, while the Sustainability Fund, it's that fund that we've been contributing to for over 10 years that is designed to support best practices and waste management, sits idle with a total of $511 million as of June 2018 of available resources to us. D W E L P's lack of leadership means Victoria has not had statewide waste policy now since 2014. Without a policy, environment agencies have not been able to effectively prioritise their limited time and resources. Roles and responsibilities are unclear and current waste instruments do not provide us with clear and coherent guidance, nor give us sufficient direction, for example, on waste avoidance. In addition, sufficient markets and infrastructure have not been effectively planned to manage the state's waste. And as we spoke before about our extension of our landfill and our dependence on landfill, that's not just for Brimbank, that's the entire of Victoria that is now relying on this landfill. And it's not sustainable. We need to look at alternatives. Sustainability Victoria has made little progress to address the long-identified data quality issues on completeness and reliability of these issues and it limits governments available to make well-informed investments and planning decisions and understand whether the reported 67% recovery rate is accurate or due to other reasons such as unaccounted waste stockpiling. Victoria is heavily reliant on export markets for recyclables. Three-quarters of our recovered plastic and half of our paper were exported mainly to China. China's heightened regulation in 2013, given the reliance of exporting, we now have had more proactive monitoring of early developments in China to better anticipate potential impacts and minimise the adverse consequences. E P A has not effectively regulated the waste industry and has resulted in inappropriate growth of waste stockpiles that pose unacceptable risks to health and environment in our communities. Since the July 2017 Colaroo fire, the E P A has taken a more concerted effort to monitor waste activities. The E P A, more frequently, and use of the E P A acts provisions, could have served a strong incentive to improper waste management. And Madam Mayor, our council has been for the last three years asking for this access to that Sustainability Fund so that E P A is given more resources and more power so that it does act in a proactive way.
Councillor Tarkos, do you need more time?
Just a minute or so.
Can I grant a time extension, please?
Sustainability Victoria has not delivered a consistent, sustained statewide approach to waste education. Consequently, Victorians are not clear about what is and what is not recyclable. On such a campaign entitled Love Food, Hate Waste was promoted. However, like other campaigns, it was short-term, limiting its effectiveness to change behaviour. And finally, in total, the audit made 22 recommendations, with a focus on completion of a statewide policy, emerging risks and changes in market conditions, improved regulation of waste activities and the expansion of capacity building for waste issues such as unaccounted waste stockpiling. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tarkos. For the seconded, I'd like to speak, councillor Trum.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the Suasdeppo Brimbank portfolio, we focused on environment and waste and lead to speak to this not of motion, but I not go to the detail that the councillor Tarko already mentioned. I just go to the coin. This not support the council resolution from airport this year with no distressing concern by council and the Brimbank community with our waste management and the recycling. It's the part of Victoria Audit General Office Independent Assurance Audit Report to Parliament. The audit found the result to our department, authority and agency have not respond well to waste and resource recovery issue. Agency are not regulating waste management well and have not developed or implement waste strategies. Victoria has not had statewide waste policies in 2014. Without the policy, environment agency had not been able to properly tell limit time and the resource. The audit made 22 recommendations with look at the collection of the statewide policy, new risk and chain of market condition, improve regulation of waste activity and the expansion of the capacity building for waste issues and waste stockpiling. We need to make the more operation of resource from the waste. I also would like to talk a brief about the bloody free in July for the Brimbank. Bloody free July involve a campaign to end to the yield of disabled bloody production and bloody shopping bag and bloody clothes. Disabled bloody product are littering our city, illusuring our facilities, waterway and for Philip Bay. Council, on behalf of community, we read a lot of resource each year to pick up bloody litter, recycling bloody and sending residual waste to the landfill. The challenge to the stop using disabled bloody product in tax of waiting the public money to link up the mess. The Sunshine Business Association and the fan of Coca-Cola group have been taking a list. Tasked drop campaign, supported by the council, community brand arm to stop the use of disabled bloody throw in the Sunshine shopping facility. This is the right first step toward law in the bloody free in Brimbank.
All right, Kim, can I just grant another extension, ten minutes please? Thank you. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you. Our community have been strongly supporting the stroke struck comment. At the council of leading council, Sustainability Portfolio, I am pleased to announce task council will follow this link. This council civic centre will be on 22nd of July to introduce the reusable broccoli to replace all the disabled bloody item shot at the bloody cup and the blood. This concrete intensive in action in council waste recycling and literally struggling from 2018 to 2029. I would like to council to filter, reduce the yield of bloody in council operation and continue to further support our community campaign who are working to reach earth of bloody. I encourage all the council to also support this effort to make our environment more healthy. I also would like to send to the environment team all the hard work they put for the community, all the idea and the project they forward for the community. And I also support and encourage, recognize the member, the community who get involved in this project. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? Councillor Hittich?
Through you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say I certainly support this notice of motion and the comments that have been made by the two councillors so far. I was recently at an M A V forum where a senior officer from a state government department went up and started to outline a program of undertaking studies into these matters over the next 12 months. And I'd have to say that the people at the forum and myself were very underwhelmed about that aspect. It seems like we have recommendations of implementation and then we're going to take another step to let it drift for another 12 months to investigate similar matters that are mentioned here. Very disappointing, very underwhelming. So all I can say is I certainly support this notice of motion. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Hittich. Councillors, any further discussion? Councillor Duttich?
Just quickly, Madam Mayor, just to endorse the comments made by my fellow councillors. This recycling in this waste business, it's been a disaster waiting to happen for a very, very long time. State government has been aware of it for a very, very long time. I certainly hope with the urging of council and other councils around the state, asking Lady D'Ambrosio, the minister and also the state government to look into the waste recycling industry and especially in view of the report that we had earlier tonight on the Ravenhall decision. It just really highlights what kind of a disaster we're actually living through at the moment. I certainly hope that someone listens and very, very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Duttich. Councillor Hittich?
Very quickly, I support all that's been said. For me though, I think the key thing we have to do now is advocacy. And I commend the work that's been done by councillors Congreve and Tarkos in that space to date. But this is going to require advocacy for a long period of time, as we've talked about earlier today. And I think the piece of work that we need to do is something that we need to sit down and discuss ourselves, but also have a talk to the community about, because I think there's a lot of people who can help us in this particular, with this particular issue. It's a biggie, but it's one for whole of community. You know, it's something we need to work on together. So I commend the councillors who've done the advocacy work. I commend councillor Trum for the work she does around sustainability. It's a big ticket item and everyone's trying very hard, but it's a very trying time.
Thank you, councillor Hittich. Councillors, any further discussion on this item? No? I'll put it to the vote. All those in favour? Carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we now move on to item 13.2, which is notice of motion, declaration of climate emergency. Now, councillors, are there any questions or points of clarification in relation to this item? No? Councillor Hittich, would you like to move your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to move a motion that council declares a climate emergency and receives the consideration of the 2019 ordinary meeting of council of Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan, delineating council position statement on the climate emergency and the actions that council will take to help restore a safer climate.
Thank you, councillor Hittich. Is there a seconded for that item? Councillor Trum? Councillor Hittich, would you like to speak to your motion?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is an issue that has, I guess, the interests of this council tonight, but has an enormous level of interest in the community more broadly. We've seen tonight a petition come before us that has been put together by members of the community locally here that requests council to consider a number of points and those points will be talked about later. It's a really important issue. There's a significant risk climate change to our community and to the whole of the world. The Brimbank council revised its greenhouse reduction strategy in 2013-23 and this was endorsed by council in July 2018. And it affirmed council's commitment to the science on climate change and the need to limit global warming to those levels identified through the United Nations Paris Agreement. This strategy also sets the target of 50% reduction in council's 2011 greenhouse gas emissions by 2022-23. We all know that human activities have caused approximately one degree Celsius of global warming above pre-industrial levels with global warming predicted to reach one and a half degrees Celsius in 2030 or soon thereafter if warming continues at the current rate. A one and a half degree Celsius rise in the global average temperature above pre-industrial level is not considered safe. And even the current warming of around about one degree Celsius is proving to be very dangerous. Climate-related risks are projected to increase with further warming. And accordingly, in 2016, the United Nations Paris Agreement was signed by 197 nations, including Australia, to prevent global temperatures from reaching two degrees Celsius above pre-industrial levels by 2100 and ideally by no more than one and a half degrees Celsius. Signaling the scale and speed of the response required and the evidence that the world is not on track to meet the Paris Agreement targets, United Nations Secretary General recently stated that we face a direct existential threat on climate in respect to the emergency we face. This climate emergency situation is widely recognised by leading climate scientists. The challenge outlined is to stop the problem escalating by doing what's needed. Our action is time-sensitive because a delayed response will lead to escalated risks. Inaction with this concern will disproportionately impact the poor and disadvantaged and our natural systems, while timely actions can have positive triple bottom line outcomes. Within Brimbank, where we're considering this tonight, we already see an increase in frequency and severity of extreme weather events such as sea waves, declining rainfall and an increase in overall temperatures, which impacts the most vulnerable residents. Sea wave effect is well known. Globally, we are also witnessing a rapid decline in biodiversity with recent United Nations back reports outlining that up to 1 million species are on the brink of extinction. While there is no precise definition, the move to declare a climate emergency has been likened to putting social structures in place on a war footing, with climate and the environment at the very centre of decision-making. To date, 21 councils in Australia have endorsed, this was at the time of writing this particular report, 21 councils in Australia had endorsed a climate emergency declaration, including the cities of Marybunong, Yarra, Moorland, Darben and Ballarat. The A C T was the first Australian state of territory to declare an emergency while the UK was the first national government. In recent times, we've had the Canadian government, in recent weeks, the Canadian government declare a climate declare a climate emergency, and more recently, the cities of Hobart and last night the city of Sydney also declared climate emergencies. Responding to the climate emergency will require a whole of council response. It will affect our economy, our fleet, our sustainability, our health and human services responses. It covers the whole of council, and responding to a climate emergency will require a whole of council response. So strategic response, and an integrated and coordinated package of measures delivered at the necessary scale, probably a large scale, and at a fairly fast speed, and driven ultimately by all levels of government. We need to be advocating very strongly to federal and state governments to declare climate emergencies, so that they too can get on the same train as we are. Business as usual and incremental improvements will not create change at the necessary scale and speed. The use of term emergency in these communications is a really good way of signaling the need to go beyond reform and business as usual. We have an emergency. I commend this notice of motion to councillors. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor. Hittich, Councillor Trum is the second. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the Sussebo Proporel Councilor, I would like to speak in support, fully support for councillor Hittich's motion. Council, early this evening, we received a petition from the community relating to this issue. This petition called on the council to consider on, first, updating the council greenhouse gas emission target, trying to reduce emission; second, repair the climate emergency plan; third, diverting council finance, internet, and access; four, collaborating with other council on climate change solution along with environmental group and other partner; fifth, advocating for more climate action from state and federal government. I thank and support the community member who led the work in putting the petition to the council, with three hundred seven petitioners to show how care from the member in our community. Council is progressing very well, is in measurement to reduce the greenhouse gas emission for its cooperation service, and is on track to achieve in two thousand twenty-three greenhouse reduction targets. The climate emergency declaration is a next step action for the council in achievement zero net emission, and for increasing the level of greenhouse and bestment from our community. The net decare of critical for work in this space, we must solve this pollution problem quickly and visibly, and why we do our work, we will be reaching a better Brimbank for all of us. I look forward to working together to respond to the climate emergency.
Thank you, Councillor Trum. Councillor Tarkos?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to support councillor Hittich's motion, and in calling it an emergency to really rise up and be proactive about what we do on the ground as a municipality. I think we've seen in the news the increased frequency and intensity of weather events such as heat, cyclones, floods, polar vortexes, intense fires, heat waves, droughts, and biodiversity such as mass animal and fish kills, mass coral bleaching, tropical diseases, and disease vectors expanding, and climate-induced migration. But what does this mean to us as a municipality on the ground? I guess, when we look at areas of disadvantage, as councillor Hittich mentioned before, areas of high density such as St Albans, which is a very high-density municipality, we have what's called heat stress in our communities, where we're becoming, more housing is being promoted in areas because we are close to the stations, et cetera, and with growth zones. But with that growth comes also less vegetation, we lose a lot of our native grasses, and that also promotes the heating up of our environment. So what I see in this motion of calling for an emergency is, what can we do as a municipality to counteract it? And what can we do to mitigate the increase in temperatures? And one thing that we're doing really well as a council that I really want to congratulate is planting more trees. We're continuing in the greening of the West, trying to promote the canopy cover where it cools the environment, and especially in our disadvantaged areas where a lot of people don't, can't afford the cooling in their homes to keep cool under that excessive heat stress. There are people that are indeed perishing in these kind of conditions. So there is an emergency existing in our municipalities and across Australia, and I'm glad to hear that other municipalities across Australia, including Sydney, have also pushed for this motion to come through. The impact of the crisis events not only impacts biodiversity and the environment and life on earth, but also our economy and economies across the world. The greatest catastrophe that we've seen is the Murray-Darling Basin, which this, I believe, is a metaphor and a warning that we cannot continue with the business-as-usual model. Things need to change, we need to act in a preventive way, as much more as we can, to subvert this die catastrophe. I urge all councillors to support this important motion, for it is not just individual, but collective action of caring citizens such as ourselves as councils, but our entire community that can affect real change. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Tarkos. Councillor Papafouliou?
I've got a question for the officers.
Yes, what's your question?
I'd like to know, for such an important plan, we'd need quite a bit of time to develop it. It's stated in the notice of motion that this is to be considered in two thousand and nineteen. Is it possible for the staff to put something together by then, by the end of the year?
Someone able to? Mr Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor, and through you, Madam Mayor. Officers would be able to prepare a response to the notice of motion within the timeframe provided within the notice of motion. However, we have not had the opportunity to fully scope what is involved in preparation of the climate emergency plan, and therefore what we would bring to council is something that is achievable within the notice of motion, that provides a framework around, that provides a response, but may indicate further work that would be required beyond the timeframe. So we would certainly respond and provide something within the, into the chamber within this calendar year, but it may indicate requirements for further work or additional resource allocation in future budget processes.
Thank you, Mrs Walsh.
I'll need to propose an amendment to that. If it's possible, I think we need to be briefed as councillors and be part of the process in developing such a plan. Is it possible to change it from two thousand and nineteen maybe to June two thousand twenty? If we need a comprehensive plan, we need time.
So if you'd like to propose an amendment to the motion?
Yes, thank you.
And your amendment is?
For consideration at a twenty-twenty, hang on, and receives for consideration at ordinary council meeting by June twenty-twenty.
So that replaces the two thousand and nineteen?
Nineteen, yeah.
I'll just wait for our team to write it up. Is there a second for the amendment, councillors?
I'll second the amendment, Madam.
Seconded by councillor Judy Chair. Councillor Papafouliou, you've got the option to speak to the amendment?
I concur with what both councillor Hittich and councillor Trum mentioned before, but I think we need time to discuss it as councillors, and we need to give our staff time to develop this plan, and also have a look at some of the other plans that do exist in other councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Has seconded liked to speak to the amendment?
Just simply, Madam Mayor, I think the councillor Papafouliou brings up a good point, and I think to give this notice of motion justice and for the Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan to be done correctly, I think that a little bit of extra time is probably required. I'd like to see a comprehensive Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan, so that the community knows that we are ticking off all the Ts and dotting all the Is, to make sure that we actually can deliver a plan that will be in line with community views.
Thank you, councillor Judy Chair. Councillors, any other further discussion on the amendment? Councillor Allen?
I just want to say, personally, I think if you were going to push it out, I think a year is too long. I don't understand if it was end of the year, you say, all right, well, that's six months to develop, but I don't think you need a year to develop. That's my personal opinion. Six months is plenty.
Thank you, councillor Allen. Any other discussion on the amendment? Councillor Hittich?
I agree with what councillor Allen has just said. I take the point that there does need to be a comprehensive climate emergency plan developed. The point of this motion tonight is to declare a climate emergency. An emergency that defers a plan for one year effectively is not an emergency in my view, that's business as usual. I think the council officers can produce in six months a suitable plan for council to consider. It doesn't have to be fully detailed and fully prescriptive at this point in time. It can have a whole range of significant matters in it, but it can also, as Mr Walsh said, can have matters requiring further work in it, and I would expect that in something of this dimension. This is a big piece of work over a big, over a long period of time. It's not going to happen in one year, it's going to happen over five and ten years. So it will be a progressive iterative climate emergency plan that we develop. So for me, I think we need to start straight away, and that six months is more than adequate to be able to do it. Thank you.
Councillor Tarkos?
Madam Mayor, I'm hearing from my community and from the kids marching in the streets that this is a declared emergency now, and we need to act on it. We can drag our feet, and we can say, wait another year, but unless we start the discussions, our community is contacting us and telling us that we need to act on this, and we as councillors have got a responsibility to act on it. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question? Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes?
Is it in doubt that we are declaring a climate emergency through this notice of motion? I thought that we were talking, the amendment had to do with the Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan, not the actual fact that we are declaring an emergency. So they are two different issues that we are debating here.
Yes, so?
The amendment had to do with the plan, not with declaring a climate emergency.
I'm altering the motion.
Sorry, we're talking about the amendment.
Yes, we're discussing the amendment, so the question for the amendment would go to councillor Papafouliou. Do you respond to, or do you propose the amendment? Did you?
The amendment was to give staff more time to develop the climate emergency plan.
Yes, so, to summarize, you're still proposing that we declare the climate emergency, we just take further time to implement the plan?
Yes.
Yes, does that answer your question, councillor Judy Chair? Is there any further discussion on this item? Councillor Trum? On the amendment, sorry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I fully support the mention from councillor Allen, councillor Tarko, and councillor Hittich, because I think is the climate emergency chain is a big issue in the community very long term, and when we call the climate emergency, it has to be, the plan has to be actioned as soon as possible, and I believe it's six months is enough for the staff to do the plan for the, about climate emergency.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Trum. Councillor Borg?
I do not support the amended motion. As we already mentioned, this is an emergency, and we need to deal with it as soon as possible, and I do believe that six months is a good time for the officers to work on the required Brimbank Climate Emergency Plan. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillor Hittich?
Madam Mayor, I have a question. The amendment relates to the development of a plan by June twenty-twenty. The original motion, we've talked about six months, it doesn't seem to me to be clear that the original motion is six months. I'm just asking a question as to, is it clear that the original motion is for six months?
So I'll just ask councillor Hittich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The intent when writing the notice of motion was to have the officers consider when they felt during two thousand and nineteen it would be appropriate to bring it back to council. It gave them that opportunity to determine the timeline based on their knowledge of what needed to be done and what resources they had available to them. So I left it open for that point. I think it could be, you know, all the way down to December, or maybe earlier, depending on.
It should be seven months.
Could be, all sorts.
Yes.
So that was the intent of it, to give the officers the license to do what they need to do within that timeframe.
Thank you, councillor Hittich. Councillor Hittich, does that answer your question?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor David, question or would you like to speak?
Oh, just a question, okay.
Yes.
You've come back to director, Walsh, please, to see, what's the appropriate time? Six months?
I'm not sure. I'm just going to ask the CEO to respond to that question.
Sure, you should, yeah.
Councillor David, I think it would be most appropriate if we actually were to do, once the motion is passed by the council, and we have the, whatever the resolution of that is, that we scope the work and then we come back to the council and provide a much more definitive timeline. At the moment, we're kind of going on, well, until we really know, but we do believe that we will be able to bring something back into the chamber for consideration, prior to what's into the year. It may require, as the other councillors have indicated, more work, but we believe we'll be able to bring something back to respond to this.
Thank you, councillor David. Is there any further discussion in relation to the amendment? No? Yes, thank you. So councillor Papafouliou, if the speaker's against the amendment, you have the right to apply. If you choose. Okay. So councillors, we are voting on the amendment now to, as to whether or not we declare a climate emergency with the report to come back into June twenty-twenty. By June twenty-twenty. So I will put that to the vote, all those in favour? All those against? Lost? So we now revert to the original motion, which was put forward by councillor Hittich. Is there any discussion on the original motion for those who have not spoken to that motion yet? Councillor Borg, yes?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I would like to congratulate councillor Hittich for moving this motion, and the community for being quite a driving force behind all this. And speaking of the community, I totally used two quotes from the emails that I received these last few days from the community, and one of them said, "This isn't just a small concerned group anymore, but the community wanting tangible action to be taken." And it continued, "Further continued with lack of federal and state government leadership, we are asking that our local council take the leadership and bring about real change." And another one said, "Your local leadership at this time is critical to help drive more local state and federal government action to reduce our emissions and respond to the climate crisis." I highly encourage the... I highly encourage my fellow councillors to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borg. Councillors, is there any further discussion for or against this item? No? I'm not sure if there was a speaker against councillor Hittich. So you might get a right of reply, so I will go straight to the vote. All those in favor? Carried unanimously. Okay, that is the end of our notice of motions this evening. So we now move on to item number fourteen, which is rescission motions, and there are no rescission motions this evening. Item number fifteen is urgent business. CEO, is there any urgent business this evening? There is no urgent business. So we'll move on to item sixteen. There is no confidential business this evening. So that is the end. I'd like to thank everybody for attending this evening and for your interest in tonight's proceedings, and I declare the meeting closed at nine fifty P M. Thank you.